My name is Judith Binder, as I said earlier. I am a member of the League of Women Voters of Central New Mexico. The League of Women Voters of Central New Mexico is a nonpartisan political, nonprofit organization that strives to protect citizens' voting rights and deliver unbiased education to voters. The League does not endorse candidates for office or political parties. Together with our partners today, we are conducting a candidate forum. Unfortunately, there are several who are absent due to other activities, usually child-based. Video recordings are being made of today's activity, and I'm sure that somebody will be able to tell us how and where and when we can find those. Okay, I will be introducing the candidates in order of -- they have drawn straws, and we are going to be starting today -- whoops, let's see -- with -- Athena Kristadulo will be starting. Each candidate will be given three minutes to discuss their reasons for running for office as District Four's candidates to the City Council of Albuquerque, New Mexico. Athena, would you like to begin?
I'm Athena Kristadulo, and I have a confession to make. I'm an engineer.
Yay!
I'm an engineer, not just from education, because I have degrees in the good, the bad, and the teeny-tiny. For those of you who don't know, that's civil engineering, environmental engineering -- I know the bad that we're doing -- and nanoscience. But it's also from how I look on life, because it means I find solutions. Engineers love to find solutions. I find solutions for me, for my family, and for my community. From establishing a school-wide math program in my oldest son's school in fourth and fifth grade -- that were many years ago -- because of a bad math program in third grade. I'm telling you, five minutes in four months is not good. To opening a café here in Albuquerque, not far from here, full of home-cooked food -- all right, Greek home-cooked food, but they loved it, and there's some baklava over there. I didn't make that one. In an area of chain restaurants with many residents who enjoyed eating out. So that was my first reason for calling myself an engineer. The second is that I speak truth to power. Engineers speak truth to power. If an engineer stamps a drawing, a design, they're saying that this is truly going to stand and withstand whatever elements we've designed it for. Third is because I've noticed that power is not listening to the truth. And I'm going to be very bold in asking, how many of you heard of the fourth National Climate Change Assessment? Raise your hand. Well, good, because you are actually in the minority. The majority of the people that I ask have never heard of it, because it's come under the BBB. It was born and buried on Black Friday. It was. Nobody's heard of it. And yet, it was the biggest alarm that scientists have tried to raise. They have told us that we have an existential threat to humanity in front of us if we don't address climate change. Now, how does that work with a city councilor? Well, we got to start somewhere. And I know that there's many other issues that we will deal with, and we'll deal with them together, but we will also deal with the biggest one around.
Our next candidate is Haley Roy. You have three minutes to discuss your positions.
Thank you. Thank you, guys, for having me today, and I just want to congratulate all of the women that are running. This isn't easy as mothers and as women, especially in this day and age, and there's so many across the country right now that are stepping up, and I just wanted to commend them. My name's Haley Jocelyn Roy, and I'm humbled to be running for City Council, District Four. I live on Crim Drive, and I've been a District Four resident for the past four years. I'm a mother to three children, and they're amazing, and they are my reason for doing They're my passion for wanting to make this community better. I own my own small business. I work in the film industry as a department head for craft services, and I -- prior to that, I was a real estate agent for the past 13 years here in Albuquerque. I am a union member of IATSE 480. That's the local film union here, and I participate in that, and I love being a part of that and what being in a union has brought for me. With all the negativity that's going on in New Mexico, I would be very proud to help be a liaison between the booming film industry and Albuquerque. It's no secret that we have problems here, and I don't want to run from those. We need to take responsible, yet innovative approaches to fixing them so we can turn the city around. I believe in taking a ground-up approach to our problem. This means identifying the problems and thinking of both short- and long-term solutions to fixing them. I do believe that Albuquerque has a massive amount of potential to become a wonderful city and to grow. And it's time that we, as people of Albuquerque, start investing into ourselves. And I know that I have a lot to learn. I am new to this, as far as political things go, but I've identified a few key issues that I want to work on immediately when I get to City Hall. We need to develop more after-school programs for our children of all ages to help foster a safe environment for all citizens. We need to focus on public safety and develop training programs that can help support community policing to curb property crimes. Also, we need to make sure that our tax dollars are reinvested the right way so that we can effectively help small businesses and grow our economy and infrastructure from the ground up. So I'm not running because I had lifelong goals of being a politician. I'm running because I care about our city, and I am personally invested in our community. I don't want my kids leaving for a better city. I want this to be our better city. Again, my name is Haley Jocelyn, and I thank you, and I urge you to contribute to every single one of the campaigns, to give us choices so that we all can gain access to public financing, and I look forward to our conversation today.
Thank you very much. Each candidate will be given a minute and a half in order to answer the question, and we will do it in reverse order each time. So the first question that will be posed: Are you in favor of the proposed ordinance for ranked choice voting? Why or why not?
I am in favor of it because it saves taxpayers' dollars on costly runoffs. It's a lot easier of a system, especially with today's technology, to achieve, and it would help at least coming to a conclusion instead of having to waste time and effort of many people when we can be working on solutions for our city. Thank you.
I agree with Haley. We have a great opportunity. They've enacted it in Santa Fe, and it's worked very well. It's already set up in our voter system, so it does not mean that we would have to spend any more money on it, and it would save even further money, because in a crowded election like this one, in District Four, you have five candidates. It's very unlikely that you'll have a majority in the first-time run, and that means runoff, which, from what I understand, costs a half a million dollars for the city to manage. So let's save the city some money and get some ranked choice voting going on. It's going to take some more work. We're coming close to the cutoff for it to happen this time, and I'm asking you, as potential voters, to get involved and go tell your city councilor that you support him, because Brad Winters is bringing it toward -- to the council, and make it happen.
What are the practical first steps that we may take to -- in Albuquerque to combat climate change?
Thank you so much for the question, climate change. Climate change is a huge issue, and it's going to need to be worked from the top down as well as the bottom up. The top-down actually happened in the state already. We got the Energy Transition Act passed in the state, and this was through the governor and through many groups working together, one of which was the New Mexico Solar Energy Association, of which I'm president. We all supported it. What that did was it held our utility companies to make and generate electricity in a clean manner, and that really addresses about half the greenhouse gases that we emit here in this state. The other half, though, are going to have to come mostly from us, our actions. And we know the scientists have told us that it's greenhouse gases that need to be addressed. Those are emitted when we turn on our gas mobiles, when we use gas for heating, and it's going to -- and as well as -- all right, we got the cow -- it's not farting, it's apparently burping -- problem that we can address by eating less meat. So there are some things that we can do individually. I myself have chosen cars. I now have a Tesla that I've worked very hard to get and am showing it to those who may not be able to get it now, but at least will start looking for it. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't know how to follow that. It's awesome. I agree with you. We need to also, when we're bringing industry here, make sure that they are being ethically and also environmentally responsible. We need to hold the people that come here accountable for what they are doing to our state. I don't know if you guys have heard about -- I mean, the fact that it's disturbing that there is nuclear waste stored in our aquifers and might be leaking into our water, and our children are drinking it, those kinds of things. We need to look for other ways to sustain our state economically that we're not selling out to businesses or corporations for our resources. Also, I agree with doing things day-to-day, whether it be, you know, making sure that our recycling program is running efficiently and actually happening. You know, in my line of work, I am the one who deals with all of the stuff that, I guess I would say, like the trash and everything else that we have that runs through with the film industry, and we're very -- you know, they're very, very conscientious about being green and making sure that we're using less water bottles and reusable-type things. And also, sorry about that, is just making sure that we -- we hold ourselves responsible, and the people that answer to you guys make sure that things are done. Also, I wanted to bring up public transportation, and, you know, the nice thing I like about the heights that I don't see in other parts of Albuquerque is you can pretty much walk anywhere and to get to your stores and everything and use your vehicles less if, you know -- I don't always drive my car, because sometimes it's broken down on me or whatever, and it's nice to just be able to walk to the store. And I think finding ways for -- to transport the public that could be green is something that we need to start looking into as a city as well, not just in the Northeast Heights, but overall for the state.
All right, we're ready for the next question. Should the city of Albuquerque consolidate law enforcement and fire services with Bernalillo County to create a single agency under one governing authority?
I don't know if that would be completely a good idea. We have our own budget, and it's a different county. I know we already have a shortage with police officers in this area as it is, but I don't know if that's a viable solution, because I just -- I feel like it's nice having checks and balances with our public figures and our authority, with the different police officers and everything. I just -- I don't know if that would be viable to do.
That could be good, and that could be bad. If you take a look at APS schools, they combine county and city, and we all know they have an issue with them being very, very large and very unorganized. However, we do work with the county on water issues, and we do work with them on other issues. At this point, though, I believe APD has an agreement with the Department of Justice, and they will have to jump through some hoops to decrease the amount of -- what do they call it? Use of force, as well as begin a community policing activity. So I think at this point, we might be better off waiting and doing that agreement and making sure that that happens and happens well, and our communities will then be safer, and we will get to know our policemen better as they implement basically a -- let's see, a cop-on-the-beat-type function. And so I think in that sense, we should just keep it as is.
Specifically, what methods would you employ to make our public schools safer?
Okay, well, first of all, APS is on a different governing body than us. However, we do provide them with police. So in that sense, we need to make sure that all the high schools have their APS police in place, and then I think a lot of it could be helped with the community policing again, because once the policemen know the people and the people know their policemen, it's going to be a better community right there. The other issue I know of is that the high schoolers especially are concerned about gun safety. There is -- and this is across the nation. This is definitely across the nation. This is not just here in Albuquerque. And so we would have to take a real good look at the gun laws that we have, and I know we enacted a new one this year, maybe even two of them, especially a background check. We have to uphold that. Our kids need to be safe. They need to feel safe when they go to school, and it's up to us as adults to make that happen.
Thank you. My daughter, who's now 18, we were at Costco shopping the other day, and she pointed out something that's simple and profound at the same time. She said, "It's so easy for me to buy a gun but not get a Kinder Egg." They've outlawed Kinder Eggs, because I might choke on them, but I can go to a gun show and get a gun.
What is that?
A Kinder Egg, they're chocolate eggs with a toy inside. They're from Germany, and they're wonderful. They're the best chocolate you've ever had. It's amazing. I like it.
I like it.
We're in agreement. Yeah, and I mean, that's true. When these children realize that they can go anywhere and go to a gun show, and they don't -- there's no regulations of that access to them, that's part of the problem, is maybe not taking guns away from everybody, but making it so a teenager can't just go somewhere and buy it like a candy bar. Thank you.
Please tell us what you know about open space opportunities and perhaps partnering with the county.
Open space opportunities as far as our parks or land use.
Parks.
Wonderful. I don't know a lot about that subject, although it is nice having access to all of that. Albuquerque is known, as far as all the cities go. This is a good point for us, that it is a very physically active city, and I think that we should provide every opportunity for the people here to go out and enjoy the beauty of New Mexico. So, I mean, if we can encourage that and work with the counties to preserve those places and let the people that live here enjoy the beauty of New Mexico, I think that that's always something that should be encouraged. Thank you.
Okay, we're in agreement on this one as well. I've been to a couple of the open spaces. They're gorgeous. It's natural. I don't have to mow the lawn. And I'm sure there's probably some good opportunities that we can learn from you folks out there as to how we can collaborate with the county. In this sense, I think it would be a good thing to do, because the more opportunities we provide others in our area, the more they'll stay in this area. I am not as lucky as Haley right here. My kids don't live here anymore. But if I had better opportunities for just a multitude and a range of activities for them and be able to promote them to them, maybe it would bring them back. I don't know. But open spaces are good. We need those open spaces.
Should major capital improvement projects such as art be placed on the ballot for voter approval? And should there be a specified amount before any more is spent?
Oh, art. So a little background on myself, the only reason that art was supported by the environmental groups was because of the electric buses, and now we all know the electric buses aren't going to run up in that art. I do have good news on that, though. Apparently, the city is trying to get a grant for electric buses to run north and south instead, better choices for electric vehicles. Now, as far as large projects being put on the ballot versus decided within the city The city council has the control of the budget. They present the budget to the mayor. I may be backwards on that one. I'm not very good with that part. They do. I thought they did. Yes. And you are the ones who vote the city councilors in. So it -- I have to look in this more, because you want your city councilors to know what's going on, and you trust -- you have to trust that they know what's going on, and they will do due diligence to make sure it's a good decision. Larger projects, though, that might be something different.
I have to agree or carry on to what she was saying as far as with art is maybe if it's a certain amount or a certain amount of money passed. You said that, that the voters also get to have a say. I'm running across many people who are very angry that their property taxes are going up, and they're paying for a project that they may never use in another part of Albuquerque, and that's understandable, you know, especially if you have a fixed income. Another, you know, $50 or $200 on your property tax is a big deal. As it stands, we have something that we invested a lot of money already in, so what do we do? We can't tear it down. I think it's good to look at alternative ways to salvage what we have and maybe see if there is something that can be done with it. The roads have already been ripped up. It is this mess that we have all inherited, and, you know, you don't want to waste the money that we've already set into it and find out maybe if there is a costly way or an efficient way to make something better out of what can be done, you know, whether it be finding people from other areas or other cities that maybe something similar has worked for them and seeing how they managed it.
What, in your opinion, is the major problem facing Albuquerque, and how would you propose a solution to it?
My opinion, as far as Albuquerque goes, and this is the basis for my entire campaign, and I'll keep saying this until, I don't know, the cows come home, is poverty. And we don't see that as much in the Northeast Heights, but poverty is affecting everything in New Mexico. If we can empower the people, if we can invest in the people in our town and our state and actually just treat people like human beings, and this goes down to the homeless people that exist and live here and are trying to survive, and if we can lift everybody up through different ways, and I have -- I can't go into details right now, but if we can find a solution to poverty, I really believe that will elevate us into the city that we should be and can be. Thank you.
I love Albuquerque. I moved here 20 years ago, fell in love with it, fell in love with the wide-open spaces and the people, but there's not much opportunity. We don't have the growth that we need. We don't have the economic opportunities that our young people need. We have the film industry, and that's excellent, and I see a good potential for that, but there's new industries that we need to be jumping on the bandwagon with that our kids want to do. We need to have more digital -- by the way, I am a co-creator of an app. We need to have more app creation. That's the direction our world is going right now, and that is the direction that our kids are being taught. They're being taught more coding in schools. We need to have more small businesses. It can't just be one or two economic drivers here. We need to develop a diversity, and that's going to take some good education, it's going to take some hard work on the part of us as well to not give handouts necessarily, but provide opportunities, giving not grants even, but investment. It's an investment in our future that we need to see. So that's what I see and what I would like to work on along with climate change.
Do you have experience with any of the agencies, processes, or groups that the city council deals with or with grants funding our government?
Or government. Or government. Anything the city councilor does?
Me. Oh, okay. I got to guess that.
Do you have experience in the things that a city councilor does or deals with?
Honestly, no, I don't. It's not like I'm incapable of learning or anybody else is. They can teach old dogs new tricks. I do learn things fairly quickly, so -- and I love researching and finding out how, you know, with those agencies, how they work and how to work with them to better our city. So I'm very open to learning about them and trying to work with them to do better here. Thank you.
So when I decided to become a city councilor, I did a little investigating, and I started going to different meetings. I went to the Northeast Neighborhood Association to find out what issues they were running. I went to the Northeast Command Meeting to find out what the police were having issues with or what the community had issues with them. And so I do know a little bit about what the city councilor does. They are the liaison between you and the different entities that the city provides: safety, transportation or mass transportation, facilities. They also work with senior affairs. So there's different parts that the councilor has to work with, and they are essentially your liaison. I am definitely ready to learn more particulars, but I think it will be an exciting way to go.
Well, you're a member of a neighborhood association, and what do you feel is the city's role in supporting neighborhood associations?
So I tried to be part of North Albuquerque Acres. I'm right on the edge of the city, but I'm in the city, and so I'm not part of them. I looked on the map recently to find out what neighborhood association I was in. I'm not in any. So then I thought, well, the first thing I'm going to do is I'm going to find out more about the neighborhood associations, because I know they have a voice in the other department I've had interactions with, and that's planning and zoning. You want to be in a neighborhood association, I was told, and I am going to get in one if I have to drag every single one on the two streets that are not in one with me. Now, just to be sure, you know, homeowners' associations are different, and unfortunately, my neighbors don't know and understand that difference, so probably the first thing I'll have to do is I will have to educate them on that. But we have a neighborhood -- But we have a neighborhood association liaison in the mayor's office. We have a, a department that we can go to and get help. Now, it's very important that we understand that those neighborhood associations breaks down the districts into even smaller areas that are much more manageable. So what I'm doing in, in my little corner is very different than what's happening in the other corner of even my district. So I think much more work on neighborhood associations can be beneficial to the city.
I'm a part of a small neighborhood association where I live, but as a Realtor, homeowners associations, and I'm glad you brought up that point, is many people, and this is, just goes back to my days working as a real estate agent, do not know the difference between a homeowners association and neighborhood association. Homeowners associations are great because they make sure that there's no weeds in your yard and all of those things, but you're paying another entity to maintain an area and tell you how to keep it. I, the biggest problem I see or saw when I was in real estate is homeowners associations, the money that you're paying towards that isn't even actually going to any, any businesses or companies in New Mexico. I don't even know if there are many that even exist, it's going to somewhere in Dallas and Texas. And, and this was one of the issues when I was a real estate agent, is I don't agree or believe that, that New Mexicans should be paying money to another state and being made to pay money to another state. So I, I really support and encourage homeowners, or neighborhood associations versus homeowners associations. And, and there needs to be maybe more education out there that that is an alternative that neighborhoods can have and people can have for their homes versus a homeowners association.
Recently, we have been learning about plastic and styrofoam. How would you have voted on banning styrofoam in plastic straws? That's a quick answer.
It's a quick answer, but also maybe a little more complicated. I would also consider the impact of small businesses and make sure that we have alternative ways for people instead of bags, maybe that the cloth bags and other ways to, to do that. When you're buying large amounts of food, I do, every single weekend you'll see me at Trader Joe's and Whole Foods and it's more difficult carrying those things out. So, you know, and it is a nice part, it's a good part and is beginning to start making a difference, but I think as far as other things that we need to consider also, as far as waste goes, we need to look into those too and bring those in the forefront, bags and styrofoam are just the tip of the iceberg.
When I decided to go fossil fuel free a few years ago, I also added to it that I would stop using plastic bags. I want to make clear that you understand plastic bags, straws and styrofoams do not contribute to climate change, just so that we're clear. This is a feel-good, I'm trying to do a good thing for the environment work. I believe that we can do without those plastic bags. I know one of the complaints was, "Well, what am I going to use for the cat litter and for the dog too?" But I bet we can be inventive. Plastic bags are used for everything. I bet you go to the grocery store and you come home with food in plastic bags that can be reused. So, and as far as bags for those who cannot afford them, maybe that should be a city initiative or an initiative maybe from our district to try and get bags, reusable bags for those who can't afford it. As far as the styrofoam, styrofoam is awful, I think it should be banned personally. I had a restaurant, I'm Greek, I had a restaurant. And yes, I used styrofoam and that was because at the time, there were no options. Now there are plenty of options within financial reach and restaurants were given the option of using up charges.
How can domestic violence be reduced in our communities? Do we have sufficient police force to cover them?
Wow, that, that's very emotional, quite a question there because nobody wants domestic violence and it cuts across socioeconomic strata. What can we do and do we have enough police? Well, we obviously don't have enough police and they do need to be trained on how properly to address the situation. Many times we're putting the victim in just enormously stressful situation in having to, to still address their attacker. That is a certain area I would have to do a lot more research and I would certainly engage the police as well as experts in the, in our courthouses.
Thank you. I ended up in a situation, and this is embarrassing to admit because I never thought that I would be that person, where I had to make a phone call and I had to wait six hours while somebody threatened to burn down my house, kill my animals and kill me. Thank goodness he didn't make good on that threat, but that was terrifying. I was lucky compared to other people that I had a really good support system of people who supported me and got me out of that situation. And a lot of women don't have that, they don't, they don't have people that they can turn to. And a lot of, I, I think it even just comes down to understanding and not blaming people for that situation. This is, this is psychological, what people are dealing with and sometimes people come off as being wonderful and women get into these situations before they realize that these are happening. And unfortunately, like, I had to experience that, I'm glad I did because then maybe that would give me more insight into relating to other people that have been in my situation or worse.
Do your constituents reach you or is there an agency where they can report various activities within their local communities, their neighborhood, their local neighborhood associations? For instance, if there's a street that needs to be repaired or if there's a neighborhood nuisance going on or just in general, where, what agency should they report to?
So we have to collect signatures and that's why we're all here today, right?
Wait, you didn't ask a question.
I'm going to. Don't worry, I will. And I was knocking on doors in my neighborhood introducing myself. There was a car that started following me, I'm by myself, and stopped every time I did. Scary, right? I mean, and this car made a huge, they made sure that they were noticeable. I put my phone on record and walked over to the car just in case I got shot in the face that like, you know, we wouldn't know why. Anyways, obviously there is not a direct way for people to dress. I, I met the person and asked them what was going on and she asked me what I was doing. She thought I was maybe profiling cars and I said, "No, I'm running for city council." And she said, "My, my son's car got broken into and, and I just wanted to find out what was going on." I really think that's a bad way to maybe do that because you don't know who I am and I didn't know who she was and it could have ended up on the news. So I think just maybe helping our community find better resources to these agencies or directly understanding, I don't even think she knew who, what a city councillor was. And I said, "That's why I'm here." I'm, I'm walking and knocking on these doors because I had my car broken into also and I don't want to have to leave my car unlocked to get, you know, to worry about, like, you leave your car unlocked and they break your window. So, I mean, obviously this is a very, very problem. I mean, it's, it's something that we need to, to find a way to help our constituents. Thank you.
Car break-ins, I've had mine broken into three times here in Albuquerque. Never once at my home though, because it's in the garage. However, I know that's a problem. But the real issue is safety in our community, it is connection in our community, it is building our neighborhoods back up. I don't know all, all my neighbors. I looked upon this effort in running as a councillor as a way to get to know my neighbors. We're afraid to get to know our neighbors in some cases. So there's several things I know going on right now that might address that. I know that community policing is trying to bring back block captains. I know that we're trying to have community policing, which means we feel safer knowing who is going to be around that neighborhood. I also know that different neighborhoods do neighborhood watches in different manners. They throw a light on their car and drive around in a very obvious way just to be a presence. Now, as far as getting in contact with me, well, the city councillor has an analyst and so they help in that liaison. And just going to the Northeast Association meetings every third Wednesday gives you an opportunity to talk to your city councillor as well. Thank you.
Would you support neighborhoods over big development? Would you hear the neighbor's point of view?
Citizens over developers, well, that's why we're here. We are here so that you have a voice. You want to make sure that the person that you have elected as city councillor is your councillor. So help us get that public financing so that we answer to you. Now, as far as developers go, I have a civil engineering background, so I know what goes into developments. And I have many acquaintances that are developers. And unfortunately, for the most part, they're only interested in the money and they're interested in one bottom line. Whereas as a councillor, I have to be concerned with a triple bottom line. Yes, I want economic development, but I also want to preserve our planet and I also want to take care of our people. So as your city councillor, it's the triple bottom line.
I love that. Growth is important for our economy and, but we need to make sure that the citizens that live here, that it doesn't, it doesn't impact us in a negative way. Back to infrastructure and, and everything else, there will be, you know, more people moving into Albuquerque. If we improve Albuquerque and we make this a place that everybody wants to come to and we, we're not number one in all the negative things and we're number one in the positive things, well, more people are going to move here. So it is one of those things, is how do we find that balance and make sure that the people that already live here aren't being negatively affected or pushed out of their neighborhoods and, and those types of things. And it's, it's very important to make sure that we keep that in mind as our city grows, that we, we, and like she said, make sure that you, you realize that the people that you're answering to aren't the, the people with the money, but the people that should always have a voice because that's what we're here for is to have a voice for the people that already are living here.
Thank you to our candidates and I think we owe them a great group of applause. I have two announcements. The first announcement is I wanted to thank my timekeeper, Jan Strand, and my assistant in collecting questions, Michelle Metters. Thank you guys from the league. And I need to remind all of you that you can go to your website, which is C A B Q Clean Campaign dot org and donate your $5 to the candidate of your choice. That's C A B Q Clean Campaign dot org.